Preparing to livestream the meeting. I'm giving you a blow by blow of the game.
We should be alive now.
It's 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 on, it's halfway there. I gotta go up to the other screen.
It says Eagle Point's going to get snow. So they're getting gonna get snow.
Yeah, it's supposed to hit everywhere.
Yeah.
Wait, tonight?
Tonight, starting at seven.
Starting at seven.
So we've got to get it on.
But really, yeah, yeah.
Get me out of here.
It's gonna dump in the middle of the night.
No, yeah.
It is? Yeah.
Yes.
I've been wrong so many times.
I know.
All right, I think we're good.
Ready, Julie?
We're good.
Okay, so we're gonna start with one point O, call to order. One point one is roll call.
Mark Arkin.
Dan Murphy. Aaron Warman.
Katie Missfow. Do we not have Bonnie yet?
No.
Okay. One point two, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. When they stand under God, indivisible, over tea and justice crawl.
Delay message.
I know. Okay, one point three, agenda review and approval. Dr. Long, is our agenda good as is?
We need to add one item, five point four, under new business. And the item is board policy review. Section J, students. And this will be a first reading of a number of policies, so I'm just gonna read the the letters into the into the record. You guys get to do the fun reading this next month, and then we'll come back and do a second reading and decide if we want to proceed. Okay?
Did you say section J?
Yes.
Topic I was wondering if we could add in is to touch on open gym and open campuses, playgrounds and facilities. Okay?
Can that be five point five?
Sure.
Open campus and?
Open gym.
And by open campus, you mean so the public can use it?
Yeah, playgrounds and and yeah, exactly.
Got it. Do I have a motion to approve? The agenda as amended.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
On favor?
Aye.
Two point O, consent agenda, two point one, correction approval of the regular meeting minutes for January ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Did anyone see any changes that were needed for the minutes?
I'm good.
Oh, hi Bonnie.
Hi, I'm here. I can't see you guys. I just see a blank B.
That's all right.
There we go. That's better.
I didn't have any corrections.
I didn't.
None here.
No.
If Bonnie missed it, Ben DeCarlo said happy birthday.
Thank you, Ben.
So we have, we have the minutes. Everyone seems to think they're okay as presented. So you want to move forward, Kay?
Yes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes for January ninth, two thousand twenty-three?
Motion is made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three point O, communication report, three point one, Butte Falls Charter School Natural Resource Center, Mr. DeCarlo.
So, good evening. I am gonna share my screen real quick, just so that we can see the.
Yes, we can see it.
But now you're muted, Ben.
Ben, you're muted.
There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, first thing I want to talk about was our community involvement day, so I have a couple of pictures from that. So, February fourth, a couple of weekends ago, we had another community work day. There was a good showing to help on some of the different projects. So, two of the bigger projects were putting up a fence line, so you can see that in the picture on the left side. And I want to give a special shout out to both Don Hammond and Dr. Long for their help ensuring that the fence posts are actually gonna be straight. So that we have an improved fence around the garden area. And then the picture on the right illustrates or highlights one of the other things we did, which was clean up our frontage along Fish Lake Road. And so, we loaded a bunch of wood scraps and branches into the trailer there, and then they're gonna eventually be chipped up into wood chips that we can use for trails. So those were two of the bigger projects that we worked on. We also worked on getting rid of some of the unneeded materials that were left from some of the building projects that weren't safe for younger kids to be around. So we're able to do that. And so, this is definitely, for me, another exciting day where we're moving forward to be able to see the NRC. Looking just that much better and becoming more safe for younger students, as I say. Then the other really exciting piece that we had, so last Tuesday, the seventh, the Gray Family Foundation came down to visit. So it was both their executive director as well as their grant program director. And so they were the people that have given us twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars since September of two thousand twenty-one towards curriculum development at DNRC. So they just wanted to be able to see how we were using their money. And I put a quote in there from the email they sent back to me after they came down. Saying, thanks so much for the awesome visit this week. We were so grateful for your time and impressed with the amazing work you're doing with Butte Falls Youth. And it wasn't just to me, but it was also to all of us who've been working out at the NRC. So that was really good to see, and then it actually got even better and more exciting in my mind. Because they're wanting to continue to partner with us moving forward. And one of the things that they are willing to commit some of their resources to is elevating and publicizing the work that we're doing at the Natural Resource Center. So to that end, in the coming months, they're gonna set up a meeting for us to meet with several different statewide initiatives towards outdoor school collaboration. And they also offered to us to be able to submit a grant application to provide financial support. To host several weeks of summer camp for our high school students to teach younger students from both in Butte Falls and the region as a whole this summer. So I will be definitely having more information on that as we move forward. But I was very excited to see they like what they're seeing and that they definitely want to continue to partner with us. And then the third thing I wanted to bring your attention to was as a direct result of the input from students in the master plan elective class last quarter. That I began working with Dr. Long and Chris Mathis. To develop a new master list of projects and activities around the Natural Resource Center. So this quarter, students have begun to work on some of these projects already. Some of the most exciting ones is improving the food forest, and so the first step was getting the fence in place. But then also being able to plant some more fruits and vegetables this spring. And I do want to point out, sixth grade is definitely on board to help us with that. We had sixth grade students out there last week digging some holes for some trees to go into, so I'm excited to move forward with that. We also are working right now on a database and trail guide of natural vegetation. On the new adventure trail, which is what's beyond the new bridge out of the butterfly garden. And so we're gonna have a catalog of all the different natural vegetation, as well as little QR codes on stakes. So does people do the interpretive trail, they can learn about the different plant life. And then we're also going through and conducting a intensive inventorying of all the different supplies around the Natural Resource Center, so that we know what we have. And, as I say, all three of these projects that we're working on to start are all being led by high school students. So I'm overseeing them, but I'm giving them the leeway to be able to figure out how we're doing that. So, for me, it's definitely been an exciting time to be able to see us moving forward with the NRC. So are there any questions I can answer from anyone on the report or anything else?
Sounds good, Ben. You're doing good work.
Thank you, Aaron. Appreciate that. All right, well, thank you very much, and I'd say that feel free to reach out. Good things are happening and starting to really move forward, so I'm excited as we look ahead to the next chunk of time we got out there, so thank you for your time.
Mr. Carlo, that sounds amazing. Thank you. Okay, three point two, superintendent report updates, Dr. Long.
You know, I think I'd like to flip that and let, I always stop all over Karina's thing she wants to share. So if she could give her principal's report and a little bit about Charter School and just what's going on, and then I'll pick up the other stuff.
Okay, now I have to think.
Oh, sorry. I'll talk about enrollment first, okay? You have in front of you the enrollment report, and you can see while we are up about twenty-one kids from a year ago this time, we're down a little bit, down three students where we were in December. We had a family move out of out of our district with three kids in in before we got this thing. We did have a couple of students visit. We had a new high school student potentially visiting today, and I think she's gonna be back. And so that's the kind of movement we see around this time of year, and we just want parents to know that their kids are safe and welcome. But we also recognize that stuff happens in families, and when people have to relocate out of the area, you know, we just try to send their kids forward with all the documentation of how they're doing. And try to make sure they get landed at their new school safely. What do you think now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so, really, I haven't had too much to report. The one thing I wanted to note was that we now fully have, we're working with Rogue Health. And their counselor, full time now, we've got lots of kids, and he's on our campus a lot. We've got our own counselor from the ESD, and then we also got from the ESD our intervention specialist. So we've now got three people that come, they're not all full time, but they're almost between the four day week. Someone is there at all times, so that's really, really helping us with student behavior. And if we do need students that have counseling and all that. And then our one interventionist is there on campus to work with students in classrooms or teachers as needed. And so those efforts have been really, really helpful, so I'm really glad that Dr. Long got all those things in place and that we're finally really coordinating with Rogue Health.
I would interject, the counselor from Rogue Health has seen about seven percent of our student population right now.
Yeah.
And those are kids who were not being served before.
Yes.
We think that's gonna continue to grow, but and remove some of the stigma of talking to someone, because it's kids have gone through a lot. So I'm really actually kind of proud of those kids who stepped up and and are seeing him, and that's service through Rogue Health. We don't pay for that service. They fund it through people's health insurance or the Oregon Health Plan. And then they also pick up the cost of some of themselves. That's kind of their mission, is to make sure that everyone can get services.
And it's great, because he comes over to our campus, and he sees kids when they're able to, at the school. So parents don't have to take them anywhere, and and just, and if I need them, I can call them. So it's just been a really great thing. What else was I gonna say? I just had something. I totally forgot what I was gonna say. Valentine's Day is tomorrow. We're gonna do a little Valentine's. We're gonna probably have a delayed start. I think we are definitely having delayed start. So that's always a fun time. We're getting more things going on with middle school, like sixth grade helping with the NRC stuff and the garden. I'm getting seventh grade to work with Ben, so that they can get over to the NRC. They're also have been going to the.
Landing?
No, not the landing, the the library, quite optimal, six and seven, go over to the library and and read books and all of that from there, so they've been great. And, and I totally spaced the other thing I was gonna say, so.
Valentine's parties tomorrow, Karina.
Yes, with our Valentine's, we're gonna do a little Valentine's party for KQ five, if school doesn't get closed, hopefully not. Hopefully not.
I don't want to be the superintendent who canceled. I can go ahead and then you.
Oh, yeah, and then I think Katie will talk to this, or Julie will talk to this. We had our parent involvement meeting this last Thursday at the school, at my school, at the elementary, and it was really good. We had multiple parents come. I think there was, I don't know, three or four, Katie, or five.
I think there was eight of us.
Yeah, total. So that was, it went from three of us to eight of us, and so we have several more parents. We've got some really good things planned in the works. I think Katie will talk about that. And so I'm really excited to start getting people back. We've actually, we've had also several people ask about volunteering, and it's filled a filled out volunteer form. So people are starting to come back into the school and and help us out and do some stuff, so that's been really great.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead with the superintendent report, and then like pray to remember something else you can interject and interrupt me, okay? Sounds fair. First of all, the most important thing during this week is we have our first high school dance of the year. It's Thursday, and I'm gonna be here not dancing, of course, but chaperoning. Our high school kids are really excited, and they have actually included our eighth grade students in that too, which, you know, difference between seniors and eighth graders. They they live in different worlds, but I think our seniors recognize there's some benefit in younger kids being able to participate in things like that, as long as they behave themselves, right? So that's really good. A couple other things that are going on. We started the project in the class with Forest Service of rebuilding picnic tables. They delivered their first huge load of decrepit picnic tables, and our kids are dismantling them. We have a planer or fixing up what we can, and we're gonna be refurbishing that and putting those back out in 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 parks. And I believe we're also gonna get a few of them for our effort too, so it kind of works both ways. Good experience for some of our kids who haven't used a lot of tools and things before to get some experience. Awesome big, big pieces of wood around. We have the piece that that I am probably most pleased about as a development in the last month or so. As you know, this district in the past years, our seniors wouldn't come until ten o'clock, and we changed our schedule, so they come at eight o'clock. But we've been trying to rebuild what they would be doing in some of that time. Many of our seniors like the electives at the end of the day, and so what do you do in the middle? Well, we've added in a course which is around teaching about finance and banking and a variety of things like that. But we also have the opportunity for them to do community service, and in fact, several of them have been hired for an hour a day or so to work. We have a new proprietor of the gas station, and two of our students go over there on different shifts and work for an hour. And I have to tell you, these are kids that they haven't had jobs before, and it's helping them get some experience, being in the public, but also just for their resume and what they're gonna do when they get done here. So they gotta 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 be there, gotta deliver the goods, and and if there isn't any gas being pumped, you gotta be keeping busy cleaning and all that, and that's what you learn. We also have three students who are doing community service by helping in our cafeteria at the elementary, and that's providing additional support to the kitchen. But also getting them that experience of having to meet deadlines, be places, and all that kind of stuff. We have a couple of our seniors who actually have jobs where they're gone one or two days a week, built, working all day. One of them goes to Ashland, helps his grandfather with his business doing excavating and stuff like that, running big, big equipment. And and then our, well, that has inspired some of our younger students to be looking for jobs, particularly ones who live down the down the road. Several people are doing food service. Our culinary arts teacher this quarter made a part of the curriculum, helping kids get their food handlers cards. And I have a photo I'll put in the next newsletter of of five of the students who accomplished that in one day. And we're using some grant funds to cover the the minimal costs for that. But it's just about getting kids some skills and some credentials and things that give them opportunities. And also get them thinking about, wow, I guess you kind of learn and stuff and being able to to apply it is kind of important. Kind of look what else I have here. Oh, and then we were able to get some additional funding through Project Youth Plus for fourth quarter. And Mr. Mathis is going to come back and lead a crew of five to eight students. And they're going to do all the framing in of the public restaurants. The foundation was poured, the rough plumbing's in. They're gonna pull that, get that piece, everything ready to go for the exterior finishes and some exterior interior finishes this summer. Of course, once they get that up, the plumber and electrician have to come in and do their stuff. But I think Mr. Mathis was able to apply about seventeen thousand dollars with the grants towards that project.
Good.
And we'll be funding the rest of it out of our district reserves, because we need public restaurants down there. Actually, we need for kid, school kids too. And it could be that that maybe next fall, there won't be a porta potty at the interest of the NRC. And we'll have some kids who are really proud of of what they've constructed. There, there is one other piece. We're already planning for next year and budgeting, and we have a couple of things coming up. We will need to do the rest of the language arts adoption for grades nine through twelve. And and I have a team working on that piece, and that's a budgeted item that we have. And then we're looking at doing our math adoption, and I was able to go with two teachers to the math curriculum caravan at RCC, the Table Rock Campus. Where all the publishers came, did their spiel's about what they're doing. And because we were small and we were assertive, we got samples of those materials that we are interested in, and so our teachers will be reviewing that. And I'll be coming to you with a recommendation in another couple of months for that. That has been an area that many districts have not been able to keep up with because of just finances and COVID and all that. And so I'm glad we can get to those two core curriculums back in shape. So seven year process cycle where you're supposed to be updating your curriculum, and those are clearly two of the the key ones in a in an academic program math. And English Language Arts, History, and Social Sciences and Science are the other two that will have.
How does a curriculum get wore out?
Well, there's, that is a fair question. Because you say well, math is math. The the reality is, it isn't just about teaching the book that states, and that there's some national standards for mathematics, for example. But states are always kind of re trying to refine and honing in on those things that align with what people need when they get out of high school for jobs. And then there's sort of a, there is a sequence of skills that you get. The the really tough part of that is that we get materials published, and publishers have to guarantee those materials are available for seven years. And then they revise them or they quit publishing them. And so as your materials run out, there's no supply, so so there could be some capitalism work here, you know?
The other part, the other part is, now that we're moving more digitally, they enhance the digital aspect, so almost all of it is online now. There's printable and online for the teacher and the student, and they're always updating. Those could be videos, could be all different stuff, so they do change stuff around.
Okay.
To make it more engaging to students or whatnot, you know?
And I would add to that, the fact that we've gone to a Chromebook for every kid, you know, in our academic areas. It it allows us to have things get pushed out to kids, even if we have to close school. It's possible to do that. And those are, that's a, that's a skill. You gotta have that flexibility now as a young, as an adult within the job market. So so that is kind of what's going on. But it is, you know, it's like, well, history, we just added, you know, seven years from the last time we did history. I think you're all aware that there's always tension around thing, teaching certain content, and history's one of them. You know, what's history? And we can spend all night having a discussion about this, but it is making sure that those core things that have been adopted by the state of Oregon. Which are designed by history teachers, social science teachers, that make sure that we have fidelity in sort of what we teach across our state. Yeah, education is one of those areas that in the Constitution is the responsibility of the state, not the federal government. And so when it comes to corporate curriculum, each state is responsible for making sure that happens, you know? Thank you. You bet.
I did remember my.
Please, please.
So, um, it's spring, teachers get starting to get tired and worn out. And so Emily and Evan Gettle did something really kind, and I don't know who it's from, but they borrowed a massage chair. It's that full body, big, huge, black massage chair. I don't know if you've ever gone to the chiropractor and seen those things, you can sit in it, sit in it, it has button, and it'll massage like your whole body. So they let us borrow it, and so we put it into one of my extra rooms that we call the refocus room for students, and I kind of made a little nook. And so I put like my little lamp that has a nice light, and I gave them some chocolate, and so on their time, they can go. And I even put like lemon, I got my little diffuser with some lemon, and I put it right in front of the smartboard, and I put some very calming music. So on their time, when they're able to, or they can ask me, I said, you know, if you need a break, just come, I'll cover you. Go to it, and they can take a few minutes and use that. So it was pretty nice to to have Evan and Emily.
The popular?
Yeah, for cer- certain people use it more than others, I'll tell you that. But yeah, I mean, if you've ever sat in one, they're actually pretty cool. You can push lots of buttons, they have heat and all just, all different stuff. So I was just trying to give them some calming spaces for, you know, it might be ten minutes, it might be five minutes, depending on what their schedule is. But, you know, we all need to be calm and regulated sometimes, and they have a space for that. So it was really, that was really nice of Evan to and Emily to kind of help us, let us borrow that from, I'm not sure, someone in the community. I don't know whose it is.
And if if there's a board member who suddenly finds they're stressing out about something. Keep you from going over the edge. Thank you. There is one other worksite that our our students have, and that is at the landing. And the new director, Angie, has reached out, and we've been trying to work a schedule where students can actually work there some too. But several of our students have been helping to reconfigure all the, and put together all the shelving, because they're turning the food bank really into like a store setup. Where you can go in and kind of shop through that, and that's been really encouraging for our seniors to be involved in something like that and start to realize some that, you know, that. Food is kind of important and access and and accessibility, and so I'm really proud of them for that. There are, there is one other thing that's, actually, we're gonna talk about that later, so I won't talk about that right now. I did want to say that. Tomorrow is a late start, and depending on what the weather is around seven forty-five tomorrow, I will determine whether we have a day of school or not. I really would prefer, if we can get kids safely up the highway and our buses moving, I'd prefer to have kids in school, because that's supportive of families and and the the weekly schedule and all that. But if, and I just got the the report this afternoon, the latest one, that we're supposed to get somewhere between two and ten inches of of snow in Butte Falls. So, you know, so that's my variable, and but it's supposed to go all the way down to five hundred feet, so that has snow at the coast, in the coast mountains. And probably in the valley floor, and so you all know, we've got these little microclimates right there, so it does weird stuff on that side of town as opposed to this side of town. It's like, really significant. So we will make that call in the morning, and we we've can't, our kids were supposed to go to a math week tomorrow, we canceled that. But I think it'll probably get canceled regionally because of the snow. Other than that, I think the other things, items that I wanted to talk about are on the agenda, so we can go on to the next item. Kay?
I'm here, I was making a note, sorry. Um, three point three, Charter School staffing update, Dr. Long and Ms. Frank.
Well, and I think Karina talked to some of the Charter School stuff. We have a couple of personnel items on the on the schedule down below, so I'm not gonna talk about those. We continue to be really tightly staffed, and it is, we have some needs right now for substitutes and classified positions and substitutes for teachers. And so I'm meeting with someone in about three weeks to see if they can become kind of a quasi-permanent substitute for us. And we're just gonna have to continue to find creative ways to staff our school and keep it going.
Perfect. Three point four, review payment of bill. Wait, did anyone have questions? Sorry. Staffy, no?
So on the 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 payment of the bills, our business manager and our former business manager, who's now a supervisor, are actually at a a week-long workshop as they're training for their new jobs. So they're not here tonight. So this is your opportunity to either stump the superintendent on air, or give me your questions, and I can follow up and get your responses. I know some of this stuff, but I don't have a computer to to look at quickly. So if you wanna, if you have any questions about any items, this would be a good time at least to identify them. So if you wanna, if you have any questions about any items, this would be a good time at least to identify them.
Okay, so on three point four, the payment of bills, does anyone have any questions? Or Dr. Long?
I had one on the first. Second one on page two. For Mary Jane Brockman. Eleven hundred and thirty-three dollars for student transport.
I can answer that, Dr. Long.
Please do.
That is um, the lady that we brought down. She's a um, third-party trainer for O D E and she trained our uh, type twenty bus trainers.
We've been able to expand. Um, we have some employees who are willing to um, help support our small group, you know, taking the small bus on groups or wrestlers. So, but they have to be trained to drive that and they'll have to have a full bus train.
Okay.
So that, that's what that's.
That's a driver training.
Yes, the driver training, yeah.
Okay. That was the only one I had.
Dan?
Vitus Construction at the bottom of page two.
Yes.
Is this something different or is this still tied into the elementary?
You know what? That is something different. That is an outstanding bill from two thousand nineteen twenty. Vitus Construction was the firm that came in and did all our insurance repair work in the gym. And we had a change of order that happened at the very last minute up in the ceiling with the type of material we used up there. We upgraded that. And it did not get in the hopper and they did, they did the work, they paid the materials and it just, so that's third of the books on that.
Basically, with Mark's question, that was another one that I had. So that concludes mine. Thank you.
Hey, Erin, do you have any grilling for me?
I have none.
Thank you, Dr. Long.
Thank you.
Okay, so we, we're probably not doing a financial summary, three point five.
Um, there is a document in there, but I, it, it's the document we get every month. What I would tell you is generally, we have been underspending our budget in part because we're not fully staffed. I mean, that's what it comes down to. And um, and we haven't had as many activities. I mean, we have been doing things to other kids, but we aren't running our full high school sports program. There's just some pieces that are budgeted but not occurring. At the, at full, full tilt.
Do we get to keep that?
What, the, the money? It, what happens is, is it gets rolled into the, any fund balance or carryover. So, you know, I mean, it's one-time money, but we, we didn't spend it, so we can leverage it for some things.
It's there for next year, basically.
Right, and, and I'm gonna have, have a, a. Actually, this might be a good time to talk about it. Um, I will be coming to the board as we build the budget with a list of capital. Improvement projects, some things that they're maintenance-related and um, we've put reserves a- aside in the past for those. We've been able to leverage some of our grants that have picked up some costs that I thought would have come out of our capital projects. For example, you might remember. We did a, uh, it was gonna be four hundred and eighty thousand dollar improvements, safety at the elementary and then. Costs went up to five hundred and thirty-five, well, I've been able to apply some grants to bring that back down some. So um. Pieces that I have earmarked that I want to talk to you about in the next month or so. Have to do with improving the safety of the entrance of our schools. For example, if you come into high school and you pull on that door, the whole wall moves. Cause it had a lot of traffic through there and um, I, I approached um, Z C S Engineering Architects. To give us a design that would allow us to have a whole new insert, probably steel or something solid. And, and to um, redo the door system so that we can actually have a locking, unlocking system that we can. Run from the office, cause we're really kind of flying blind with that door. So if it's left unlocked, a person can come in unattended. But if it's locked, then you always have to come out of the office and come around and check. So that's one of them. The second one um. Is the double doors that go into the gym. Which are original double doors. They're like we had a, well, they, they might have been put in the, in the sixties. Um, but the weather and all the thing, all the wear and tear, we can't even get the parts to replace the panty bars on them. And I, I've used some um, four-inch screws to put the. To hold it together in the middle so that it'll latch and lock because the door was not latching and it was unlocking, being unlocked even though it was. Everyone thought it was locked. And we need to replace that unit and that's probably a five to six thousand dollar. Price to just do that. And then I also see the door down by the boys locker room. It's a single door. This would be the time to replace it also with a steel door that, that would be more secure. Um, things wear out. That's what maintenance is for. Um, and then there's some other safety upgrades. So those are pieces. That as we talk about how we are really careful with our expenditures and, and um, leverage grants to pick up some of the costs. That, that we would otherwise have to fund. This is a way to make sure that we're continuing to do the maintenance that we need to in our buildings. We have a need to replace some flooring in several classrooms. It's been on the dock for the last couple of years, but with supply chain and labor issues. It's, you know, it goes back on the back burner. And um, and then we have a real need to do a cleanup. Freshen up in our elementary restrooms and the staff restrooms over there, the sinks in the boys and girls restrooms are. Constantly moving there. If you went to school here, it's those half-round ones that are made out of aggregate concrete. And then I had you step on a bar and the water comes out. Well. Fifty years of that, um, the springs don't work, water leaks, you have water on the floor, um, and other adventures occur with those. So. So those are pieces that I'm hoping to bring a proposal to you as part of how we might use some of our maintenance reserves for next year. And I just wanted to get that on the radar. I am going to proceed and have Z C S draw us up a plan for the front door of the school. Cause we need that piece. And um, then there are a few other pieces that we're taking care of this spring down at the Natural Resource Center. If you recall, as you drive up the driveway and there's that back line of, there's a bunch of buildings in the back, there's a shop. And there are some original rest, public restrooms there that were abandoned and they are. They're hazardous, is what they are. Um, I'm working with a, a company to, to basically pull all, clean that all out, scrape it off. Make sure there isn't anything that's unsafe there because we, we can't recap that stuff. And uh, we are gonna try to salvage the metal roofing on, this was on about fifteen years ago before we closed the hatchery down. Those are all the things that, that make it safer for kids and um, reduce our liabilities. So. And that's related to this. We see what's going on here. Um, and then also, um, you know. We'll be talking later, but we're gonna be bargaining again with our Classified Association and we need to think about compensation for our, our employees and how to. Attract and retain people here. Any questions on that?
I think that all sounds amazing, fixing up facilities. Um, any other questions or comments? Okay, so three point six, uh, the site council parent involvement report, Ms. Freeman.
And I'm gonna let you talk about that in just a minute, um, Ms. Katie, but um, I just wanted to throw out that we did get approval on our title. Budget narratives for our carryover. And then to remind everybody on the board that I, I got you all into the Oregon Government Ethic Commission. And you will, on March fifteenth, this is gonna all open up to you and you'll have a month to get everything in and it's a two-part gig. You'll get an invitation and to create an account and then you'll have to fill out the account. So, um, Dr. Long or I am here to help you if you need any help. It's kind of a short window there, so I just wanted to remind you. Now, Ms. Katie, you can talk about um, your parent.
Julie, before you do that, I just wanna tell board members, I don't want you to be intimidated by this and it is absolutely okay if you just wanna schedule some time to come by. And Julie and I can walk you through it all and get it done. Okay?
Is this a statement of economic interest?
Yes.
Okay, cause that was on my question list for tonight. So we're taking care of that when?
By March fifteen.
It opens.
March fifteenth to uh, uh, April fifteenth in that window, not that it should be too taxing. Um, we, that's when you gotta fill out, register and all that. And we just wanna make sure you all are, are safe in that process. So. Uh, check with Julie a- after March fifteenth. For me.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so parent involvement, yes?
Yes.
Okay, so we had a meeting, which I was really excited. We had. Different people show up, um, thanks to Ms. Chavez and Ms. Frey. And uh, we had really good discussions. I met some new moms. We are hosting, I don't have my notes on it, but we are hosting a, a live museum. Slash art show on April twenty-sixth, six to eight P M. And we've put some items uh, down that we wanna put on the calendar for next year. Which is gonna be a much larger list of parent involvement events. And um, wi- one of the things I think is really cool is we would like to host. Like a parent education night where we serve food, provide childcare. Hopefully, um, we can get high school students out. Uh, to do their community service hours, to do the childcare. Um, and that's just gonna be talk about like. Discipline in the home or how to deal with different situations. So. It's gonna be, it's gonna be really cool. I'm excited to get the parent involvement group going again.
Positive discipline parenting and.
Yeah.
We're doing positive discipline in the schools. Positive discipline, there's a section that's parenting.
Yes.
Yeah.
That is kind of what we're looking at, so I'm excited. Ms. Frey, anything else on that?
No, I just, it was, it was good to have multiple um, other parents there and have some different. Ideas and outlooks that we didn't have before. Um, we're going to do the same that she's talking about as. An all-school voluntary. There's two pieces to it. They can do either one or the other. It's voluntary and then we're gonna have volunteers come in. Probably once a week to work with the students to get it all ready. So it's not a burden on the teachers or anything else. This is a, an extra thing that volunteers and parents and. Whoever else wants to help is gonna do and then we'll put it on. And then anyone can come to it. It doesn't have to be just the kids' families, obviously. Anybody can come in and, and. And watch the stuff. So I think it's gonna be pretty cool.
It's gonna be neat. Any questions? Okay, three point seven, Butte Falls Community School Partnership, Mr. Murphy.
The landing is focusing on various fundraising projects for the preschool. And the food pantry reorganization is nearing completion. And it has made a major change. That's basically our major projects.
Thank you.
Do we have any public present that wants to comment or any emails?
You know, I, I checked my email account and we have no emails regarding public comment and tonight we have no guests in the board meeting area here either.
Okay. Four point O is old business, four point one, community listening session, February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, Dr. Long.
Um, yes, we're scheduled to have an opportunity like we gave a year ago. Um, it will be at six o'clock in the evening in the cafeteria. Um, I'm sending out a survey to parents this week regarding one issue about uh, our four-day week and whether we wanna move to Tuesdays through Fridays. And I'm intentional that because that may bring some people who wanna come talk to us too, and that's a great venue to get feedback from people. But um. Board is invited to come and we're just gonna listen and there may be some good dialogue that occurs in that. That's great. Um, this is part of our bigger effort. To try to hear from our students, our staff, our parents, their families and our community about, you know, setting priorities for our school. Uh, community or the development of our school and how we build our budget. So. Um, that will be next Tuesday. Monday's a holiday and that'll be Tuesday the twenty-first at six o'clock.
Did, did you say you sent out a survey on the?
We will, we will be sending a survey out this week.
I've had a few parents approach me about it.
Yeah, I mentioned it in the newsletter, the February newsletter, so it should go live um, in another two days, I think. Okay.
Is it a meeting with the board and the community or is it a community thing in the board? You said it was kind of optional.
It's, it's a, it's an opportunity for you to come listen. We're not scheduling it as a board meeting, but. We, I, I know people wanna kinda know, they'll be thrilled if there are some board members there to hear what's going on. I will be there. Administration will be there. We'll probably have some staff there too.
I think last year's was more of a board meeting with the public, liable to. Voice all their concerns. This is a little different or?
They can voice all their concerns. That's why having board members there along the administration will be helpful. It's a listening session. Just a chance to hear what people. I think there, I think you have an item on, on the thing here that some people may want to talk about. So, so those, that's, it's, it's what's on people's minds.
Sure.
Yeah.
I'll be there, Dr. Long.
Okay.
That's a council night too. But, yeah, I will be there.
Thank you.
So I don't know if it's that or the previous one under public comment or the next one and four point two, planning for next year. I do have a question as it relates to all of it.
Go for it.
The. Biden administration and the federal government are in the news officially ending COVID on May eleventh. There's something up. Uh, what does that look like for the state of Oregon and education and does it change things? Are there any? I haven't, maybe I haven't spoke up at the last couple of meetings, but I'm just curious as what current restrictions. As it relates to all the things that we've experienced and what do we see for the future?
Yeah. Uh, there, there is one restriction out there that is a regulation and the legislature is meeting this session and I'm hoping that they'll tend to it. And that is the requirement around vaccination or exceptions, the process of doing that. But it, it is a regulation and we're held to it. Uh, we've been able to work with people around that, but it, at this point, if, if. If that is the official position of the federal government and the state needs to get in line with it, we really need that regulation changed.
So the federal government's still regulating it under certain?
That the states are, Oregon is, it's, it's an Oregon regulation.
It's an Oregon regulation.
Yeah, and it was, it's the, it's the vaccination one that requires that. I can't hire anyone who's not vaccinated unless they have a religious or. Uh, medical exemption, which.
So the federal government ends their.
It doesn't change.
Emergency stuff. They're keeping and they're hiring, the state is keeping the mandate.
It's, it's in place until they change it and the legislature can change it. They should.
And when does that meet? When are they meeting?
They're in session right um, now, February. They're, they're cropping bills. They're talking about stuff.
So just cause the feds do away with it, doesn't mean the state has to.
Well, because it's a, because it's a state regulation. Yeah, on, for that specific issue.
So it doesn't sound like the federal change affects.
Doesn't affect that one thing. Yeah. What, but it was, I mean, we don't have the.
But didn't it come from the feds to the states?
Um, the guidelines did. For, for employees, the state added the piece around volunteers and uh, anyone we contract with and then just on and on and on. And, and really, that's the hard thing in terms of getting volunteers back in our school. People have to jump through that hoop. We're having people who are willing to jump through the hoop either by getting vaccinated or taking, uh, requesting one of the exemptions. But I have to tell you, it's really weird, I'm just gonna say as a superintendent, to have to take a request for someone for a religious exemption. On vaccinations, I don't think that that is appropriate for me to be in that role, but that's what the regulation does.
I think, I remember you voicing that before, but. So there is no relationship between our country and the federal government as a nation saying COVID is over. And then the state's following along from a federal guidance.
Yeah, the guy.
They're gonna, the state's gonna do their own thing.
Well, the, the state followed the federal guidance, but the federal guidance to start and that set it down a road. But now what we have is a federal government saying we're moving back over here now. What we, what we need is the state to follow. So, so. So, so I guess, because I know this has been a concern of this board. One of the things, if I was directed, I could communicate to our legislators. Um, is that the board is very concerned about this very restrictive regulation that is affecting our relationship with our, our community.
I, I would like to communicate that because it has been a thing since the beginning. And it's really frustrating if other states and or the federal government is not requiring a mandate. A mandatory vaccine, particularly for somebody that wants to volunteer. And then our detached state government that isn't part of this rural thing or pays much attention to us is. And then our detached state government that isn't part of this rural thing or pays much attention to us is nope, we're stick. The whole state is under one rule.
And so when this was the emergency power decision.
Right, that's where I was going with this, but that emergency thing is.
But, but it became a regulation. And that was one of the, the questions that people had last, a year ago, I think it was in February when it became a regulation. So what is it going to take to, to change this back? Under emergency powers, the governor had no more authority to do it. But the legislature, if, if they acted in such a way to make it a, 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 a rule now that I have to follow, right? And so, so the question. That I've been hearing from you all individually, and maybe you need to ask me in a, in this public meeting if you agree is. Um, can you communicate to the, to the state that if everyone else is moving in this direction, can we please have that repealed now?
Right.
Yep, is that kind of what I'm hearing from you?
Make that motion.
Wait. But, okay, so. To clarify, the motion is if the federal government is no longer requiring vaccines. To volunteer in schools or to teach in schools. Um. That our state should follow that mandate?
I don't know that they ever required it, but it, it was formed from.
They, they required of the military services, and I don't think they require it anymore.
Right.
So, so I don't know, pass a motion and that formal, I think what, what I would be helpful is if you gave me direction to. Communicated writing to our legislators, the concern about that very specific regulation. And that it seems like it's time for that to no longer be a permanent rule, that's right. Is that, is that, that I think gets us.
So if it's not a motion, what?
It's direction.
I can direct you, Mark can direct you, but does, do we vote on a direction?
You do.
Okay, so.
And this one, I think he wants a vote, so, oh, who was the first?
I spoke up. First.
Yep.
And second?
I will, I support the proposal or the direction.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Julie, do you have that motion?
Just direct the superintendent to communicate to legislators that it's time to.
Sunset.
To sunset.
The requirement of vaccine.
I will ask you to write that down for me and I will put that in the minutes, please, and thank you.
Scrabble down here, I think we're good.
Was there any nays?
No.
No, but I have to tell you, Bonnie, I lost um, connection, so I logged her out and I'll tell you when she comes back in.
We have a majority.
Okay.
Would, one question I had was talking about this, does, does that? Have anything to do with why we're having trouble recruiting staff here?
You know what, I've had people who've applied for jobs here, and when they heard that requirement. They said, I'm not going to do that, and yet they did not feel that they could validly approve, apply for one of those exceptions, so they just went look for work elsewhere.
So it has.
Or, or it upset them, you know, and, and it's, it, it puts, it puts up a new employee. Feeling like they're in conflict with their boss who's supposed to make a rule happen, whether I agree with it or not, and so I, I think it will be helpful. If, if we can move forward.
So wasn't the. Mandatory. Regulation, before it was regulation, it was.
It's emergency.
It was emergency, so where is the state, because I haven't paid a whole lot of attention to all of it. Where is the state of Oregon in the emergency declaration that they pull back the emergency part of it?
Yes.
Yeah.
And how long ago did they do that?
Been a while.
Been a while, right? But, but, but somehow it morphed from a guidance from the CDC to do these things, and then it became a state regulation.
It's an ORF.
So the legislator uh, voted on that and put it into law?
Yeah. I think it was about a year ago in the emergency status.
Was it expiring?
It expired.
Yeah, it was in, it was like in February, March.
Well, the emergency thing was indefinite, remember, it was like, yeah, it's gonna be emergency forever, but then they must have realized, oh, we don't have an emergency forever.
I think technically even forever, even sunsets, I think the governor had authority for a certain period of time and it could renew it, but then, and that's why they made that rule. Permanent. And, and when it happened, there were people who said, it's not, don't make it permanent because it'll never change, well. So, and, and they said, no, 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 so it's like, maybe it's the no, no, no time, maybe we need to.
It's for state employees.
But it morphed into volunteers.
Right, or anybody associated with.
Right.
So under the current rule of Vitus Construction. They had to come up here and do that little job for thirty-six hundred dollars, did they have to be vaci- vaccinated?
Fortunately, that was two thousand nineteen, but for the work they did do with this, they had, they, they had to be vaccinated or have medical exception or religious exceptions for their employees.
Before they could show up.
And that was the, a part of the contract.
And anything today moving forward? If they were to bid anybody to bid a job to work on this.
Still in place. Still in place.
Wow.
Yeah. So, so I appreciate the direction on you, I will communicate that, this is the time to do it. Uh, legislators, uh, we met with them a month ago and they're in contact with superintendents, so. I will draft something, if you're all okay, me putting your names below that piece.
Yeah.
Um, I will run it by your board chair. For form, and I don't think it's complex, pretty straightforward.
I'd be glad to sign it if that's what's required.
Okay.
And the reason I bring it all up is, you know, it's February. I realize it takes time, but maybe by next year? We won't have this.
Well, here's the deal.
Maybe by next, by this summer, we could meet and they could say. Could we get a couple volunteers to put the football team together? I would hate to be in July or August and have. Somebody, I will put names out, some young kid, hey, I'd like to come help with the football, and then to have you or. So, some administrators say, sorry, you can't even set foot on the.
I've, I've had to have that conversation with right volunteers, and it's not a fun one, yeah, okay. So planning for next year. By the way.
Four point two, planning for next year, yes.
Yeah, by the way, the legislature is supposed to complete the session by June, so they really have an opportunity to take care of it. In time for next year, or even this summer, because many of the laws they passed are affected July, it can be affected July one. Um, I just wanted to reiterate under old business that we are in this process of gathering information from students, parents, our community. Um, around what we're doing, and you know, I guess what I'd say is what's working well, what, uh. What needs to be tweaked and what do we need to quit doing type stuff, and we've been getting really good feedback from our students. We've used information from our parents' surveys, the listening session's gonna be helpful. And um, I think some of the other things that have come to us in terms of our staff were. Um, we should have a really solid plan for next year, you may recall five years ago, I brought to you a proposed five-year plan. Next year is the fifth year of that, it's, you, you, you really want to have your next plan in process before your last year expires, so. So that's just an update on that.
I have a question, Dr. Long.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so at, I believe our last board meeting, you talked about putting out a survey. About Monday through Thursday versus Tuesday through, through Friday, are we still thinking about doing that?
Yes, that should go out on Wednesday.
Perfect, okay.
Just letting you all know Bonnie's back.
Okay, we'll behave ourselves.
Okay, any other questions for Dr. Long before we move on? Okay, four point O is old, nope. Five point O is new business, five point one, resolution two, three dash oh five, classified. Employees Appreciation Week, March sixth through tenth, two thousand twenty-three, Dr. Long.
Historically, we've find, take a week under governor's direction to. Um, express publicly appreciation for our classified employees, it is the first week in March, but you will not meet before this, so we bring this resolution to you. On behalf of our classified employees, and I'm just wondering if we could. Do a read around on this and then uh, would ask your unanimous support of this resolution. So I will start Classified Employee Appreciation Week, Resolution twenty-three oh five. Whereas the education of youth is essential to the future of our community, state, country, and world, and.
Whereas classified employees are the backbone of our public education system and.
Whereas classified employees work directly with students, educators, parents, volunteers, business partners, and community members, and.
Whereas classified employees support the smooth operation in offices, the safety and maintenance of buildings and property, and the safe transportation. Healthy nutrition and direct instruction of students, and.
Whereas the community depends upon and trusts classified employees to serve students and.
Katie, do you have a copy of this in front of you? I guess I'll read it, whereas classified employees with their diverse talents and true dedication nurture students throughout their school years.
Now.
I was muted. I can read some.
You want to do the now therefore?
I will, now therefore be it resolved that the. Butte Falls Charter School Board of Directors proclaims March sixth through tenth, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three to be classified. Employee Appreciation Week and.
Be it further resolved that the Butte Falls Board of Directors strongly encourages all members of our community to join in this observance. Recognizing the dedication and hard work of these individuals. Adopted this thirteenth day of February. Signed by Katie Metzger. School Board Director.
Board Director. So we need a motion and a second and a vote to affirm this resolution, twenty-three oh five.
Make the motion.
Oh, make it, okay. I'll second.
All in favor, aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you, guys. Uh, so five point two is the S O E S D. Local Service Plan, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. I read through it, I hope everyone else did, Dr. Long, action item.
Yes, um, this is an annual occurrence in order for us to work collaboratively with other districts and the Southern Oregon E S D. The E S D is charged with coming up with a local service plan where they outline their service model. And the menu of items of services that are available as a small district. This is an extremely important blessing for us. Because it allows us access to expertise and services that we could not afford ourselves. My recommendation would be that you approve the local service plan. And I have a ballot here actually, and the statement would be, uh, the motion would be. Um, to approve the Southern Oregon E S D twenty-three twenty-four Local Service Plan and Student Success Act Comprehensive Support Plan. And so I am asking for a motion and a second and discussion if you want it, and then approval.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Can I ask a question before we approve it?
You're the boss.
So I was reading through this and I got kind of excited about what they offer, and this might not be the right place to ask, but. We talked about doing like a parent education night. Would they be able to help us at all? Because it does talk about training for families. Um, with parent discipline training or even just handouts. For an event next year.
Yeah, are we talking about, we're, we're kind of talking about the top, positive discipline for parents?
Yes.
I've already talked to our person at E S D.
Yes.
Nicolette, and yes, absolutely.
Okay, that's super exciting, um, okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Unanimous.
Okay, so five point three newspaper of record, uh. Ms. Aiken is not here, Dr. Long.
Um, Julie, you have a right to.
Yes. Yes, I talked to, well, I texted, texted, talked to Rachel just briefly. And we're gonna have to table this to, till next month, because one of the places that we chose is no longer in business. And there is a new um, media source coming to the Rogue Valley that we need to connect with, and she's gonna talk to some people up in Salem tonight also.
Yeah, our newspaper of record was the Metford Mail Tribune, which no longer exists.
Yeah.
So there is a new pa- re- uh. Regional newspaper coming and that might be the place we go, but we need to see how they organize. The reason why we need this is this is where we do all our official notices. If we don't do that, then we're not in compliance with state law and we're not communicating with the public, so we'll table that till next, it'll be old business, next meeting.
Okay, five point four, board policies review, section J.
Um, along with your packet, um, if you're here and if you aren't, Julie will have it for you. I've given you a nice novel, it's a nice novel of double-sided copies, what I, I want to tell you the good news on this. There actually are not very many really big substantive changes in this section. What there is, um, if you look at most board policies, at the very end, there's citations of. Legal uh, documentation of why we'd have a policy and that, as soon as that gets updated, that, that triggers a new policy. I have gone through and you'll see my struggles, um, I looked at our, your existing policies and then I made notes. Um, I, if there was like a choice between two policies, I picked the, the one that was closest to what you had and then included the changes. There are a couple, um, they changed the title on, there was one that dealt with tobacco-free environment, it's now called. Use of tobacco products, alcohol, drugs, or inhalant delivery systems, that just tells you kind of what's happened in terms of the complexity of dealing with tobacco. Um, on ones that are brand new, I wrote the word new. Um, the reason why I would encourage you, and I'll give an example of that with the J F C E B, which is personal electronic devices and social media. Um, this is the middle ground on where a district would land. With regards to telephones and other uh, electronic devices, it best aligns with what we're doing, and yet it gives us the policy when we run into. Um, challenges from people who move into our community who either want a more conservative or a more liberal. Interpretation of, of, of phones in schools, I think phones are tools, the reality is. We kids don't walk around with phones, they walk around with microcomputers that happen to also function as phones. It introduces a lot of things into the environment that can be helpful, but also distractions. So um, read through those, um, I think that the, the items that I chose reflect. Um, what I believe is where this board is at, and what I have to do today is to read the alphabet soup of all these into the record. So if you'll, if that's okay, uh, Katie, can I, can I just do this quick reading of the first reading titles?
Absolutely.
Okay. Stay awake, folks. Um, in the first reading, the board will be considering policies in section J, students. First policy, educational, educational, no, equal educational opportunity, policy J B. Uh, updating sexual harassment policy, J B A slash G B N. Sexual harassment complaint procedure, that's an A R, J B A, G B N, A R one. And then the federal law Title Nine Sexual Harassment Complaint Procedure, J B A, J B N dash A R two. Those all relate to sexual harassment. Next poll, set up policies, section five oh four students, that's policy J B A A. Section five oh four students, uh, the A R is J B A A R. Uh, and then uh, educational equity, which is a new policy, is J B B. And then the next policy is attendance, policy J E, compulsory attendance, policy J E A. And then the A R that goes along with that are regarding compulsory attendance notices and citations. That's J E A dash A R, the law does give us some legal recourse if people are, keep, are not sending their kids to school. Uh, next policy is policy J E B A, that's early entrance, has to do with our policy about. If a person wanted to enroll their, their four-year-old in our kindergarten, which our policy requires you be. Age five by first grade and how we attend to that, we do have that policy, it's a minor updates in language. Policy J E C A, which is about admission of resident districts. Um, we're in a unique circumstance because we are a charter district, but there's enough language in this policy, it's recommended that we have it. Um, that has to do with how we handle students who live within our boundaries. And then policy J E C A C slash G B H, which is staff-student-parent relations. And then there's a series of policies that we're not looking at because they're about non-resident peoples and stuff, and the reality is we're a charter school, so. They don't really fit. And then there's a, a update on our policy on homeless students and the A R associated, that's J F C B B and J, excuse me, J E C B B. And J E C B B dash A R. And then um, there's a policy on student absences and excuses, that's policy J E D. Policy on truancy, which is J E B A. Um, student rights and responsibilities, which is J E slash J F A. And then student conduct, and actually, one of those you can cross off, they had two versions, and I picked a version that aligned with what you have with the upgrades. So that is policy J F C. Under uh, student dress and grooming, policy J F C A, this is the basis that we can build a dress code on and. How students conduct themselves. Uh, policy J F C B, which is care of district property by students. Policy J F C E B, which is about. Policy J F C E B, which is about personal electronic devices and social media. And there's an A R associated with that, J F C E B A R. And then, uh, adding, they added hazing and medicine. I think you already have done that to your policy, but hazing, harassment, intimidation, bullying, menacing, cyberbullying, team dating violence or domestic violence. It's a policy for students. It's policy. J L C E and the associated A R with that, which is J F C E A R. And then, um, I have written out at the bottom because it was on the next page, use of tobacco products, alcohol, drugs, or inhalant delivery systems. That's policies. J F C G, J F C H, and J F C I. And then there is an associated A R with that, which is J F C G. Then there's even more excitement on the next page, um, an update to your policy weapons in the schools, J F C J. And then threats of violent violence, J F C M. Policy on pregnant or parenting students, J F E and individualized plan for pregnant or parenting teens, J F E dash A R. Policy update on student searches and the associated A R, which is J F G and J F G dash A R. Policy on student demonstrations and petitions. I believe this is a new policy, J F I. Policy on student discipline, policy G J J G. On corporal punishment, policy J G A on the use of restraint or seclusion, J G A B. On the detention of students, and we have these policies as, uh, these are updates, uh, J D. Policy on suspension, J G D. Discipline of students with disability abilities and its associated A R, which is J G B A and J G B A dash A R. Uh, update on your policy of expulsion, J G E. I don't think there was anything, um, substantial substantive, but the references are updated and a little bit of wording. Uh, policy on alternative education programs related to expulsion. J G E A, which relates to how we handle it when we expel a student and provide for alternative debt. Student health services and requirements, policy J H C. Immunization, physical examination, vision screening, eye examination and dental screening, policy J H C A slash J H C B. Communicable diseases, students, policy J H C C, and then the A R that goes with it, uh, J H C C dash A R. Policy on students, H I V, uh, H B V and, and AIDS, policy J H C C A. That's actually combines a couple of policies that you have as they've updated that. Policy on medications and the associated A R, which are J H C D slash J H C D A. And then the associated A R, that's a really tricky one for us. It's important to have it in policy because more and more. Um, we are accountable when someone says my kid needs to take this prescription every day at two o'clock. We have to account for the chain of custody of the medication. We have to log what occurred, track the, the bills and train the people who actually administer to a student. Um, say student safety, which is policy J H F, student vehicle use, which is J H F D. Report of suspected abuse of a child, uh, policy J H F E, and there are two. ARs associated with that, one on reporting of suspected abuse of child and one on abuse of child investigations conducted. On district premises, that's what an, uh, agency comes on and they need to interview a student or whatever, and that keeps our staff safe. Reporting requirements for suspected sexual conduct with students, that's J H F F slash G B N A A. The G B, the G policies relate to staff. That's why some of those have. The two quotes. And then there's an A R associated with that. And then another, uh, new policy on student suicide prevention. This is a new state requirement. We'll be working on. On finalizing our support for that is policy J H H. Uh, updating the student fees, fines and charges, policy J N. Education records, records of students with disabilities, policy J O slash I G B A B. The I policies tend to. To relate to, um, curriculum. Education records, records of students with disabilities management, uh, which is the A R associated with that. And then directory information, policy J O A. Personally identifiable information, which is policy J O B. And finally. The use of legal names of students, which is policy J O C. So I encourage the board this month, as you read through there, pick a colored pen like a red or a green or some color will stand out, mark up your copies. And when we meet next month, we'll go through and we'll respond to any questions you have, and that would allow us to make adjustments to these, and then you'll have an opportunity if you want. To, um, either approve them or spend more time on them. Okay?
Well done, Dr. Long. That's a lot of letters.
It's, it sounded a little more intelligent than the B policies where it was always the blah, 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 blah. So thank you.
Uh, linguistic workout for you.
Uh, Dr. Long, thank you. Uh, would it be helpful for people that had questions or? Comments on it to email you in between?
Yes, you can even, uh, board members can email me. You have my address. If anyone that from the public has a question, they should email feedback at but falls dot K one two dot O R, the U S. And we'll respond to those. Julie, I noticed that you have an item under six about contract renewal. Did, was there a list that accompanied that?
There is.
Yes, do you not have in your packet?
I don't have.
We still have a five point five to go through.
Okay, thank you.
So five point five is open campus and open gym.
Yes.
Yeah, that was the one I brought up. I've had a, a few parents. Ask about both. Um, but I'll touch on the open campus. That's one we brought up. We've talked about it a few times. Where, where are we at with that? Is it? Available to the public yet?
You know, our, our campuses can be available as long as people. Treat them kindly, of course. Um, currently it's possible to access our elementary camps through the gates. They're not locking those after hours. Um, I believe the high school campus does get locked up and part of it is, is I just don't have staff to unlock it and then lock it back up. It's, it's a staffing issue.
Right.
But I would say anyone in the public who wants to use our open grounds. To reach out to me, give us a call and I'll make sure that we understand if what the access issue is because they're, they're, we don't have a problem.
So on the, on the high school, when is it locked?
During the school hours.
Oh.
Yeah, it's a closed campus and.
Okay.
Except when we lose a lock and a chain and then, then I have to go get another one because that happens. Yeah.
Okay. And then the open gyms, that's been brought up a few times.
So, so the, the challenge on that is this, it's. We can't open up our field facilities for just anyone to come in and do whatever they want because they're educational facilities and we actually have to have them ready to go. And so when people come and use our facilities, usually we, we end up being swept in all those types of things. The concern that I've had, that, that, that I have right now is I'm kind of caught because of that regulation. About who should be on our campuses and vaccinations, all that's part of it. But also I, I had, I'll give you an example. I had a, a dad who lives in our district, doesn't, his kids don't go to our school. They go to a private school. And he wanted to come up and just practice with his daughter practicing basketball. And we have a gym and it's like, that sounds totally reasonable, doesn't it?
Right.
But the reality is just that type of thing means that anyone who wants to come up and do it, then I have lights on and then I have to think about. Is the place secure? Did we leave a program set up on the stage? Do we have audio visual equipment? If something gets, gets messed with, then it affects our program. So we really ask that people go through the process of making a formal request.
Right.
And fill out the form and take accountability for it. And that's awkward because I know for years, there's, uh, uh, I. The joke I heard is that more people had keys to our, to our gym than any other facility in the city, you know?
Right.
But I gotta make, keep it safe for kids and usable for our program.
So it, it sounds like it is available through.
Through the proper. And we have a process, we have a board policy for requesting access and I, it slayed me that to have to tell us that, no. Because I get it, and you know, um, we do have out, outdoor basket hoops, but it, you know, but that isn't the same as practicing on wood gym and all that. And, um.
I guess what I, what I was familiar with when I was younger was that there is a. Men's league or something. They, yeah, every Tuesday night they got the gym and it was scheduled and.
It's scheduled. Yeah, that's exactly the schedule. They, they, they're accountable to make sure it's secure. That's such a responsible party. If we have any damage or anything missing. They lock it up. Sure. And, and that, that mechanism is there.
So that does work.
That does. Now, and that does work. There is a question that the board has to, to, to consider. That there is usage expense when people use our facilities. And it's, it's not just utilities. It is a maintenance piece. You have a, you have a, an impact on your maintenance that, that it's like, well, no, I've just used your gym for an hour, but. When you have people using it over a period of time, that's additional wear and tear. Now, it is part of your community relationship too.
Right.
So it is about finding that piece, but if we have lights left on all night somewhere, which we've had a couple of problems, even with our own staff, you know, there's costs with that. So. Um, so that's probably the, the healthier discussion is for people to, to be willing to come talk about how do you actually get, use permission to use our facilities? And I think board policies is such that we can allow them to do that if they go through the, 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 the mechanisms. There are some requirements when groups use them to have some insurance. Uh, protection and many times, uh, a, a person won't have that. But like a church might sponsor an activity and they wouldn't have that, or, um, a, a group of men might be able to, to, to pull something together. And that is a mechanism. In some towns, they actually create a nonprofit that, that per- provides the umbrella for people to be able to access that. It's just a little more complicated than in our, our little village here.
Right.
I have a question.
Please.
I do too.
Okay, so. Did I understand that the elementary outdoor, the grounds is unlocked during the weekend?
Yes.
And.
Not, not the, the, uh, cycle on other one. That's, that's gives away my. My dialect now, doesn't it? Not the chain link fence gates, but the other gates are open right now.
And I saw kids playing there over the weekend, so I was curious.
Pardon me?
I saw kids playing on campus over the weekend, so I was curious.
And, and you gotta know, two years ago, I, I had to shoot people off because by law you couldn't have people there. We can't.
Right.
Okay, so that's good to know.
Yeah.
And, and my, my next comment is when I've done parent, um. Parent events is I've had to get permission. To use the facilities and make sure that it was cleaned up, locked up, all of it afterward. So.
Yeah.
That makes sense to me and, and hopefully we could just maybe advertise like maybe on our Facebook page how people could do that.
Well, it, the, 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 the more obtuse way is it's in your board policy on how to use the facilities. I'm, I'm, I'm a little reluctant to advertise on our Facebook page because I, really I don't want people from out of our community come up and use.
Yeah. Yeah, I get it.
But I think among our, our parents and, you know, um, and, and that maybe I could put something into my newsletter that goes out about that because that goes to everyone who lives in But Falls plus all our parents.
That might be a good idea. I mean, I don't know, or.
Even. I gotta get this regulation repealed first.
Like, yeah.
Well.
Put it out there. If there's a process to use the facilities, you know?
You're right. Oh.
Yeah.
Well. We've had a couple of one time visitor events, so. So, yeah, so, so I, excellent question. You know, that's part of how we reconnect with our community. We've already had some opportunities with local, uh, barbecues and. And some, I think it was an Easter service here last year, you know, the meal.
There was.
And it just, it allows our community to be in our schools and then they see what's going on and what we need help with or what we're doing well. So. That's great.
Good. That's my thought. Uh, was a Bonnie that had a question.
I do. So, um, coming more from a coach and, um, us coaches, would we be allowed to do like? At coach discretion, you know, like no, no bus runs or anything, but would we be able to do like open gyms on occasions, which basketball is almost over, but. On like Fridays, um, when there's not school or practice, because that's been brought up to, to me a lot as, as. A coach. From parents. I know, like, I wouldn't expect a bus run and it wouldn't be a required practice. But just that open gym where like if the, one of us or both of us coaches wanted to go and there was a handful of girls that wanted to go and do an open gym. Um, would we be able to do that?
I think, I think that is doable, but it has to be organized through the athletic director. And it, and it really is, if, you know, if, if the, the, it's this sort of fine line between, I can do this because I'm a coach, but you can't because you're not. I'm not saying that, that's. It, that, that we pay our coaches to provide a service and support. I do think the other part of that is, is when you do an open gym, then who, who's it open to? So does the whole family come? Do we have neighborhood kids? Do we have friends of people coming? And now it's becoming, uh, an event. And, um, and then people are wondering all over our facility and I need to have it ready next day for school. And, and so it's.
Yeah.
So I, I think what you're asking Bonnie is, is can we do open gyms for guys? Can we do them for girls that, you know, are students?
I would say just the players even like just, you know, if they're on the team and, and the coach. Um, Billy or myself, you know, wanted to open it up for an hour or two hours, you know, for a little extra practice time. Um, for the girls, I would expect it to still be, you know, the same as our practices run now where it is a closed practice.
Right.
So not so much open gym like for community members or any of that, but like. Just little extra practice time with our, our players if they wanted to participate.
Well, and I, and, and I think you're talking about how we develop our players so that they can play at the high school level and they have really loved the sport. And, and yet you have challenges there of people saying, well, it's not equitable. I don't live close here. I don't have transportation. So we're always going to have that tension. Okay, I totally get it. Um, I, but I think what you're describing is doable and I would say. If there was a group of, of women or men who wanted to have a, a monthly basketball night or whatever, they just need to arrange that. Through our, our, uh, community, uh, use of facilities piece. They have responsible party and, and generally in any of those groups, there's at least one responsible person, right? And, and, and we, we can accommodate that. Just.
Awesome.
Yeah. But, but for coaches who are employees of the district or, or they're freelancing as in the role of it, but not taking pay. They need to work through the athletic director to schedule those things.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Great question. I'm glad we're having questions like that. Those are good questions.
Main thing though is the insurance factor.
Yes, and that's about liability.
You bet.
Any other questions on that?
Any other comments on five point five?
I don't. Thank you.
Okay, so six point O personnel, six point one. Annual renewal, non-renewal, contract extensions and non-extensions of teachers. And administrators as required by O R S statutes, Dr. Long.
So before you have a sheet of paper, which I didn't find my packet because I misplaced it. So thank you for all the history. And on it, it lists five categories of probationary and licensed teachers. It is a responsibility every year for the board to take action on teachers. And administrators who are probationary because they get one year licensing, one year renewals. And then for teachers or administrators who've been in that role for three years and successfully are completing that, they then are offered a, a two year sort of rolling contract. And I know that seems odd because we bargained a contract. This is, this is the individual employment contract with someone. As opposed to the terms of employment, which is what you bargain with, with. And so, um, tonight you have the following in the category, and I recommend approval of this in the, in the category of licensed probationary educators. Who are offered a one year renewal for next year. And these are people who are either first year this year or second year this year. They would include, uh, our Melody Ely, um, to be moved to the year two status, Tanya New Toledo to be moved to two year status. Yeah, Elijah Bowers to move to three year status and Aaron DeCarlo to three year status. And you would be approving, offering them a one you, your renewal of their contract. For, um, for teachers who are moving from probationary to contract status, we have no one in that category. Our other teachers are all contract teachers. For the following contract teachers who are now in the second year of their contract extension and we need to offer them a two more, another two year extension. Um, those teachers are Shayna Brown, Ashley Childers, Danielle Vetkovich, Maggie Smart, Cy Carrigan, Benjamin DeCarlo, Terry Olson, Sarah Chavez. Jill DuFren and Sartie Powell. And so basically by approving what I, what I'm recommending, that they would continue as contract educators and we're making a two year offer. Of employment to them. Um, for the following licensed probationary administrators, we would be offering a one year, uh, contract to renewal. Um, we have one of those as Karina Faray and she would actually be a second year, thank God, second year.
You're keeping.
Administrator. And that's, that's what I'm saying. Please let's keep her. And then this last category can be a little confusing, but we did hire a temporary educator mid-year. And, uh, under our practices and all of that, we automatically non-renew all temporary teachers because what we will do. Is we will open that position up and that person can apply, but we will open up to hire someone who would be a first year probationary teacher for the whole year. So that has nothing to do, it says without prejudice. There's nothing about. So that has nothing to do, it says without prejudice, there's nothing about good or bad about the person. It's just because they're, they're status as a temporary educator. It is my recommendation that the board, um, approve all these contracts as listed below.
I'll make a motion to approve. The annual non-renewal contract extension and non-extension of teachers and administrators as required by O R S.
Second.
Discussion?
One question.
Yes.
Now the two-year contract renewal, that's going to go along with the teacher's existing contract then?
What it, what it gives them is, is they got two more years. We're, we're employing them for two more years.
Right, and that will be part of their overall contract then?
Right, yeah, yeah. But it's specific to them because the, the big contract, which is the employment agreement or the terms are higher. So these become continuing employees is what they are, or it maintains that status.
And some of these, uh, teachers have been here a long time.
Yes.
So, but their job is only two years.
You're only guaranteed two years.
So if we didn't want to renew one of these, we could discontinue it.
Well, that's a little more complicated because when they be, when they achieve that contract status. Then you can only not renew it for cause. Which is part of our evaluation process. And what we're telling you is that we have not found in the valuation process cause not to. Renew these contracts.
Can you follow you.
Terminate a contract midterm for cause?
If you've gone through a process, but if you've identified cause, then you have to provide the supports to help them deal with the issue wherever it is. You put them on a plan. Yeah. Now, if a teacher is a probationary teacher, we cannot, we can just not renew them without cause. We can just say, thank you, we're not going to renew.
At the two-year mark.
Um, at first, this, at this point, and when they're going to third, but once they're a third year, then actually we can't put third year.
The end of the third year.
Yeah, but, but once we make that decision, they become contract, then that we have to show cause.
You have what's called tenure.
I guess I don't see the significance of this if.
Yeah.
Is there any significance to a two-year? Deal if there's, you have to have cause anyways?
Um. We probably could spend a lot more time talking about this. That the, the reality is, is could you not renew a contract teacher? All it's saying is, is that you have to go through more steps to get there. And all the board is really saying is, is we're not guaranteeing you a job for the rest of your life here. And that was a change in the law. The law, it used to be, it was a three-year thing, you know, and, and he got renewed. And, and, and it got changed to, to two. And I think it's, is it, is it three for administrators or two, once you become a contract administrator? I can't remember. It may be two. It, it, but it, it, the, the, the reality is that the legislature actually acted differently than you might have predicted. And they said, we need to not be making these promises that go on and on. We need to make sure there's good evaluation support, people are doing their jobs.
So it's more of the formality?
At this point, it's a formality for the board.
Yes, you can fire people, but. There's a whole process because they're in the union.
Whether it's two-year or not.
I mean, it, it can happen.
Yeah.
You just have to go through a process.
Six point two.
Oh, did you vote on that?
No, we have to make a motion.
Any other questions?
I don't.
Okay.
I make a motion to, um.
Already made.
We're new.
We already made the motion.
Excuse me, Erin made the motion, Katie's second in it, you guys discuss, now we need a vote.
On favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Thank you, Julie.
And then the, the last one here, it seems almost after the fact, it's just the way things rolled here. Um, we, I need for you to approve the hiring of a middle school girls' basketball coach. Um, I'm assuming that's, uh, Billie Jean?
It is.
We did, on the agenda last time, and she's almost done doing it now. And actually, she's had this amazing assistant coach. Who works, I would say for peanuts, but not even for peanuts. Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you, they spoiled me pretty good today.
Good.
And Riley, thank you, Riley. Yeah, I know he's not here, but.
Yep, and so I'm making this motion, I need a motion in a second to hire her. Because this is a job that's defined under the teacher collective bargaining agreement and you need to approve all hires like that.
I make a motion to hire, tell me if I get it right, Billie Jean Myers.
Just basketball.
As our girls' basketball coach.
My second.
On favor?
Hi.
I. Okay, so we are at seven point O comments, future agenda items from the board.
I have, uh, one thing I'll bring up. Um. With, with the, uh. Hopefully the state relaxing our volunteer restrictions. It did have. Uh, at least, uh, one parent that's interested in the, um. The Jackson County Stockman Association has a ag education committee that goes around to different schools. I've brought it to the board in the past, more of just an awareness, so, um. That committee's still out there and active, they've reached out to a lot of the urban schools and, and it's. Um. This year, one of the things they did was the kids that have four-H projects. Take their projects to these smaller school or the. Different, uh, urban schools and showcase their four-H project from start to finish through the fair. And so it just gives some exposure. Um. Of kind of an, I don't know, another culture's proper terms, but, um. Just something that these kids may not see elsewhere. And so it's kind of promoting the ag and livestock industry in our youth. So, um, there is some parents that asked, how come they're not doing that at Beat Falls? And so I kind of explained to them the history with it, but, um, hopefully in the near future, if, um. Um, there's an opportunity, the district will be open to it. I know the, the committee that runs it is, you know, it's all volunteers and they're pretty, there, a lot of schools were. Well, you know, very welcoming, so they're strapped hitting all these other schools, but we can get more volunteers. Um, that wanna, to help, um. Cause they take the kids to the school with, uh, they don't take their livestock to the school, but pitchers and, and whatnot, so. Um, so anyway, just trying to keep that alive and, and out there if, if. If, uh, the school thinks there's value in it, probably. I'm a, I'm a member of the Stockman Association, so. We, I have some knowledge of what's going on there, so.
Thank you.
Mark, is that, are you saying the group that comes out to schools and helps kids is the stock association?
Yeah, there, there's a, there's a subcommittee of the, of the county Stockman's Association or, or Cattlemen's Association. And they're really trying to promote the, uh, industry to the youth, so. So, yeah, there's, there's, um. They, usually it's current kids with four-H projects. Um. They go to, basically go to other schools and do show and tell. Um, a lot of the kids are from the Eagle Point District, um. But Eagle Point is pretty engulfed with, uh, four-H F F A. So they'll hit Medford and Ashland and some of the other districts that might not have that exposure. And so. Um, I don't know if that answered your question or not, Katie?
It does, I was just curious. What group exactly is willing to come help kids get these projects going?
It's.
Or help them through it?
It's more just an education and just given a little bit of exposure to, um, other opportunities or, or, um. Kind of the, the four-H program, the F F A program. Um, a lot of them, some of the Medford schools don't have the F F A program, you know, but, but there's four-H. And it's, it's not just promoting four-H, it's just, um. Kind of showcasing opportunities in the ag, uh, world, I guess, for kids, so.
Where, where we live, that's pretty cool, so, okay.
Yeah, the ki- kids that go to this school would probably have more opportunities. To be involved with animal projects than, you know, someone that goes to Jackson School in Medford, but, um.
Yeah.
It's a lot, I think it's, the main thing is just getting some exposure. From, from the agricultural. Um. Lifestyle, I guess, into some, uh, some of these other schools that may not be so ingrained with it.
That's super awesome, thank you, Mark.
Yeah. That, that was my comment, future agenda item.
Any other comments?
I have none.
My comment is simple. Uh, the various vocational skills training programs for students. Opportunities, it's a very good and worthwhile project. And should have been for a long time. And it gives them different facets, different opportunities, that's a good thing.
And that's vocational skills, right, Dan?
Yes.
Any other comments? Okay, before we go into executive session, again, I want to thank our, um, our school staff, our administration. You guys are amazing, I have three kids in the school, you're doing a great job. Um. And so, we don't, we don't have to adjourn before we go into executive session, do we?
No.
You don't adjourn your recess.
We're gonna take a recess, we're gonna, actually, if you wouldn't mind.
I'm, I'm watching Julie.
Is that, because I want time for you two to go away.
Okay, and then, and so why don't we take like a three-minute break? And then we can stretch our legs and then we'll come back. I have, there are two items for discussion. Uh, one is related to O R S one nine two six six zero two. The other one, O R S one nine two six six zero, oh, that's two D, and then it was two H, which have to do with pocket bargaining. And, uh, potential litigation. So those will be the items, and once we complete those, then we will adjourn, there'll be no other board business. Okay?
Except we have to close the meeting, yeah. Okay, got it.
When is it? Seven forty-five.
I'm watching it, Julie, it's seven forty-four.
Okay, I have to get my dookey at this.
It's snowy outside.
It's snowy.
It is.
Yay, sorry, no, people have to drive home.
Okay, it's all downhill, clean for me.
It's not, it's, it's not.
Yeah, it's fine.
It is, but it's not bad.
Okay, I don't need to do. Oh, I have to do it up here.
Yeah, I still see live.
Yeah, well, I, this computer is not our normal computer, so I'm kind of struggling here with. It.